That being said, Secretary Johnson Mossad, we need to do a roll call, please.
Member Karen?
Here.
Chair Ekstrom?
Here.
Member Holland?
Secretary Johnson Mossad, I'm here. Chair Prady. Member Wall?
Here.
May I read a gardener? We have a quorum.
And just to let everyone know, Chair Prady will not be joining us tonight. She had some things to take care of that were unforeseen. Let's start our evening with public comment. And if you were looking at the agenda, I could read the entire first school committee policy B D H. Public comment will be governed by the following rules. However, I think we're all familiar with that unless someone really needs me to read. Secretary Johnson Mossad, do we have anyone available for public comments or interested in public comments this evening?
Yes, our usual practice is to ask people online to type into the chat if you would like to comment. And then after we're done reading, calling on the folks who posted in the chat, we check to see if there's anyone who's dialed in by telephone who would like to comment.
And Secretary Johnson Mossad, when someone begins to speak, we typically ask them for their address and the city name.
Our recording secretary is trying to get our attention. Susan Farber?
There are a fair number of people who are not muted and there's background noise. And I'm wondering if we could ask everyone who's not currently speaking to mute. And I also might add, we don't ask people for their specific addresses, just their tone.
Okay, great. Thank you for clearing that up. Member Johnson Mossad, feel free to begin our, our public comments this evening.
I will. And folks commenting have three minutes to comment. Start with the folks who asked about signing up. Jamie, would you like to come off mute and make your comment?
Sure. Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
All right. Hi, everyone. I live in Greenfield. My name is Jamie Winell, and I work at Greenfield Middle School. I am speaking tonight to share my concern for student and staff well-being. We are all aware that the education system has changed in many drastic ways since the pandemic, and that in many in our community have experienced trauma, be it from poverty or from pandemic or losing someone due to the pandemic. Arguably, with the difficulties of remote school and hybrid, the collective loss over the course of the pandemic, and the stresses of being back in person, trying to maintain distance, trying to keep our masks on. With considerable staffing shortages and increased student behavior and student needs all around us, we are all experiencing trauma. I am a solution-minded and fairly optimistic person. I am very quick to start problem solving. I volunteer my time at recess to help students play better with each other, and I volunteer my time to run an after-school gardening program. I want to go straight to solutions, but I think that there is a critical piece that we need to remember as we're trying to address student safety and school safety. And that is that we have experienced trauma, and we need to approach this through a trauma-informed lens. We need to recognize that many, the many different traumatic things that our students have lived through. When we look through a trauma-informed lens, we take a bigger picture look, and we see what student needs, needs are not being met, what led up to incidents, what patterns might be arising, and most importantly, what changes can we make so that moving forward, that aspect of our community is cared for? In other words, what are we going to do to heal the traumas and prevent re-traumatization if we can? Your leadership, school committee, is critical on this topic, and will have ramifications for all of our schools and our entire district. Your decisions around instituting a plainclothes police officer, an SRO, to act as a resource may have serious and long-term implications, and it might be a decision that is hard to take, to change. As a community, we came together to say that we wanted our schools to be entirely places of learning without the presence of police officers, no matter their clothing. In fact, we came together to share stories about how the SRO who had been at GHS in the past had repeatedly crossed student boundaries and faced disciplinary measures. We made that decision together that we were going to discontinue having an SRO in our schools, precisely because it led on, led to calling on the SRO more frequently, just because they were in the building. And this, not surprisingly, had disproportionate effect on students of the global majority, also known as students of color. Superintendent, when you started, I was most excited about hearing your interest in restorative practices. I believe that we need restorative practices and even restorative justice, where if there is a violation of community trust, the concerned parties come together to look at the harm done and how to repair it to previous conditions. That's a restorative part. I would actually argue, looking at the state of the world and looking at our students and our staff, which we are desperately trying to keep, that we actually need transformative justice. We need to change the conditions that lead to trauma. We need healing, supportive thinking. Is that my time? Oh. Okay. We don't need punitive measures. Thank you for your vote.
Andrea Michael?
Hi. Sorry, just moving away from some background noise. Um, hi. Um, Andrea Michael, I live in Greenfield. Um, I have a son at the middle school and another one at the elementary level. I spoke at the last meeting and I think we all know that we're in a situation right now of crisis. We're in a situation where kids aren't learning a lot of the time. And I think we all know the reasons. I do not know the solution. I'm generally opposed to SROs for all the reasons just stated. And in general, because there's been a lot of research that says that that's not the best idea. I also realize that we're in a crisis situation right now where we don't have the resources that we, sources that we need in the schools. I know that a lot of people think that SROs are that, could fill that gap. I, I don't know. I really appreciated it at the last meeting when Katie Karen mentioned that she'd like to hear from the teachers and from the schools. I think that that's really the best approach, and we're going to hear from a lot of people tonight who think that they know the solution. And I don't know that any of us really does, and we can't call on an expert who can tell us, hey, here's what you do when students and a whole community have been through a pandemic because we don't know. But I will say that if, if the decision is made to have SROs, that I really strongly hope that it will be written right into there that it is something that is for a crisis situation, and that is temporary, and that we're going to reevaluate or go back to the decision we all made to the community not very long ago. So I, I'm generally against it, but I do feel like if we have to do it, I really hope it can be temporary. That's it.
Thank you. Lozen Adastra? Sorry if I butchered your name. I see your hand. You can come off mute. Yep.
Hi. Thanks for having me. I'm Lozen from North Hampton. These are my babies, Daisy and Stray. My father, uncle, grandfather, and cousins were all incarcerated before I was born. And then I moved to the United States. And I'm a person of the exceptionally beautiful global majority, as you can tell. And I would like to tell you that it was, it was traumatizing to have a police officer in the school. It was traumatizing to have a police officer in the school, knowing that they're the ones that put my whole family in prison and left me and my mother alone, right? For, for stuff, for weed, for stuff that they're selling and raking in millions and millions of dollars of profits on. My family has never recovered emotionally, financially, or none of our relationships have been restored to what they were like before we were separated. I still have family members that I don't see because we're separated, because either they're in prison or they're gone mentally because they were in prison for too long. Every time I see a police officer, I'm uncomfortable. I'm uncomfortable every day. Every day in America, I'm uncomfortable. So I think that the bare minimum that you could do is not traumatize kids that have come from diverse backgrounds, that their parents might have been incarcerated, or their brothers and sisters or cousins. We don't need police officers in the school. That, that is an added trauma that just adds to our already really messed up lives. And, and, and our lives were messed up because the U.S. government decided to over-police our families. That's, that's, that's a white person directive, you know, we're here, you know, it feels sort of as hostages sometimes that people of the global majority are here because of how the police and how DSS operates in our homes at a disproportionate rate, right? You target us at a disproportionate rate, you incarcerate us at a disproportionate rate, and we do not feel like we are equals. We feel like you're hunting us, and the least that you can do is leave it out of the schools. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Elizabeth Denieve?
My name is Elizabeth Denieve. I live in Greenfield, and my daughter is a fifth grader at the middle school. I think it's important that we take a little time to understand why we seem to be in crisis and what the students and teachers need most to help them get through it. How do we help them? I was at the Health and Safety Subcommittee meeting last week, the Subcommittee meeting last week, and heard heartrending testimony during the school committee meeting from parents and students, both for and against the officers coming in. But our response to these issues cannot be just based on an anecdote or relationship with a single person. By the end of that meeting, it was starting to sound like having the officers coming in was a done deal. It was clear to me that fear and emotion were driving hasty decision-making. Someone said that families will choice out of the district if an SRO is not put into place. But for example, have you done any analysis or polling to find out how many families would leave or choose another district in the future if there is an officer? Given a choice between a school with police and one with none, at least some parents will choose the one without, not because they hate police, but to be at a safe distance from a school that they're told needs one. This should not go forward based on a few incidents, and not until there's some review of real-world population-level data. We owe it to Greenfield to make informed decisions that will serve all the students, the teachers, and the community at large. I'd like to briefly list a few of the issues that I believe the school committee needs to consider. In Massachusetts, in 2015, 16, Black and Latinx students represented 27% of all students, but 64% of all arrests, student arrests. The arrest rates at schools with SROs are three and a half times higher than schools without, and in some states, the arrest rates are as much as eight times higher. 16 school districts in Massachusetts with SROs were studied and showed that the line between behaviors warranting school discipline and those requiring law enforcement intervention were often blurred, and that behaviors considered criminal in one district were construed as being solely the domain of school disciplinarians in another. Arrests are a major contributor to the school-to-prison pipeline, which pushes juveniles out of school and into the justice system. The traumatic impact these interactions have on youth can lead to depression, anxiety, PTSD, and other mental and physical health issues. In the end, police are not social workers. They're not counselors. They have the legal capacity to use violence in situations where the average citizen would be arrested, and sometimes in ways that escalate minor infractions into serious life-altering events for kids. It's trauma we're trying to reduce, so let's look first at using counseling and other trauma-reducing techniques. Turning childhood behavioral problems over to the police statistically means more handcuffs, threats, guns, arrests. It's not impossible that your child will be profiled, that your child will be interrogated, or that your child will be arrested. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Garrett?
My name is Garrett O'Brien from Greenfield, and I'm a former GPS employee. I wanted to speak about the public stir and potentially resulting school committee temptation to reinstate the GHS Student Resource Officer, or SRO. From what I understand, through remaining in touch with quite a few GPS staff and reading the recorder, GHS and GMS are seeing a disturbing uptick in behavioral issues that are necessitating more and more high-risk interventions by staff. To be clear, this is not a Greenfield-only problem, as towns and cities all over the country are reporting the same issues in their adolescent populations as we approach two years of living with COVID-19. Though it's not a Greenfield-only problem, it of course needs a Greenfield-specific solution. As someone who worked in GHS for three years, I was happy to see the SRO, the role, not the person, leave GHS as a symbol, as a priority to serve Greenfield students at a root cause level of conflict, rather than at a reactive and/or potentially crisis intervention level. As a special education employee, I received Crisis Prevention Intervention Training, CPI training. This program provides de-escalation training for interacting with all students, not just special ed students. In the CPI model, crisis intervention, which may include physical support to help keep all parties safe, is the final last resort method to be used when helping a student resolve a behavioral incident. Distressed students should only experience that level of intervention if all other de-escalatory techniques have been attempted. This can include removing all demand from the student or simply talking about what they are feeling, which would be a much better expenditure of time, in my opinion, than engaging in power struggles with teens that are checked out at best, given the increased trauma many of them endured in the past two calendar years. In a few short years of seeing CPI put into action by caring, trained adults at GHS, it made me realize the wide gap in the skill set of SROs compared to trained mental health professionals when it comes to student de-escalation. In a time like this, we need to have consistent expectations and consistent follow-through if we want to see, if we want to set students up for success. UPS should not revert back to age-old punishment-first authoritative practices that failed youth and especially youth of color time and time again. These authoritative methods and ideals are still the go-to approaches of police officers in America. Their training is different and serves its purpose. Its purpose isn't for creating a pipeline from GHS hallways to Greenfield Police Department cells. I think I'll end up being too long if I keep going, so I'll just stop it there. Thanks for your time, and thank you all for your service.
Thank you, Garrett. For folks who are just coming in, we're in public comment. If you are able to and you're interested in commenting during the chat, and we'll take them in the order that they come in. Next, we have Doug Selwyn, followed by James Henry. Three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Doug Selwyn. I live in Greenfield. I agree with basically everything that's been said so far, so I won't repeat it. I will say that one of the factors that is most disturbing about what we're seeing in schools comes out of the overall climate we are in in society, which I guess is pretty obvious, but there it is. What we have seen modeled by the adults around is that if you don't like something, you bully, you resort to violence and incivility as a way of resolving problems. You don't like what's happening, threaten to shout, lie, bully, et cetera. Kids see that modeled, and it's one of the, one of the places they go. I also would like to recognize that part of what we're dealing with is the gross underfunding and unresponsiveness of the state and the feds in getting the resources to overwork burned-out educators and families throughout our community, so that we are at our last nerve, as a friend used to say. And what happens when you stress people beyond the breaking point is you then bring in the troops. And I think that's what we're talking about in terms of bringing in the police, rather than actually solving or addressing fundamental problems. We're saying, well, there are a lot of bad things happening. Let's bring in somebody who can, you know, put it down through force. And that's the wrong direction. I think we need to really focus on getting the resources we need to our students, to our staff, so we have stable staff who are paid livable salaries and have reasonable conditions. And that means addressing the city. It means addressing the state. It means addressing the feds. It means joining with other districts who are also experiencing this in a united front to say, we need what we need so we can really serve our kids. Going in the direction of the police is the wrong direction. That's not a slam on the police. It's not what they're trained for, as others have said. What we need are people who can really give our educators, our children, and our families what they need so that they can live healthy lives that are, that are trauma and stress-free, and help them move out of that, that state of trauma so many of us are in. Thank you very much.
James Henry, followed by Molly Merritt?
Good evening, members of the committee. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I live here in Greenfield, and I'm a 1985 graduate of Greenfield High School. And I just want to say, over the years, I've lived in a lot of different places where they have successfully used SROs. And what my experience is that it really depends upon how the position is implemented and who the, who the person is. Some police officers can truly be a resource for students. I have a son on the autism spectrum. He was very often one of the people who would be disrupting the school environment. I had to work with the SRO at his high school, and he worked exceedingly well to help get my son under control on a number of occasions. So I'm, I'm looking at this from the perspective of a parent who is concerned that the inmates are kind of running the asylum here. And if the answer to that, to solve that problem is to put an SRO in the schools, I'm in favor of that. If anyone who is opposed to an SRO has opposing views or some, some other ideas of how to get this under control, I would be willing to listen to that as well. But on the surface, I have seen where the SRO can be an effective tool to help foster an academic environment where students can actually focus on learning.
Thank you. Molly Merritt, followed by Adrian Nunez?
Hi, my name is Molly Merritt. I live in Greenfield. So I'm here to express a strong opinion that we should keep school resource officers out of our schools permanently. I believe that instead of turning to police officers who criminalize and traumatize already vulnerable students, I urge the school committee members to research and pursue restorative justice school programs. The, the person commenter who just spoke before said they'd like to see some other examples. I would really encourage everyone to check out the Pallante program in Holyoke. I don't know if this is, if WebEx works like this, but I can put the, the link to their website in the chat. It's a really, really successful program in, in Holyoke where restorative justice is happening instead of school policing with like really amazing results. And I don't see why Greenfield can't follow in that example. Like many other folks have already mentioned, school policing disproportionately affects youth of color and other marginalized students while taking resources away from programs that support and enrich all of our students. And like many folks mentioned, SROs are a direct link in the school-to-prison pipeline, which is an unfortunate reality in many schools in this country. I know that over the years, many community members have made, have made it clear that they do not want a police officer in the Greenfield schools. And national racial justice organizations have also made a very clear case against SROs. So I hope we can create a school environment that promotes problem-solving and conflict resolution through restorative and transformative justice programs. Frightening and criminalizing students who are already struggling does not serve students in our community.
Thank you. Adrian Nunez, followed by Cadence Scotto.
Hi, everyone. So nice to see you. Thank you so much for your service. It's been a while. I am here to join the vast majority of folks who have spoken already. I won't repeat their. Something is happening with a share screen I'm not aware of. Quickly, just here to say that I'm here to speak out against employing a school resource officer or multiple school resource officers. As you know, research indicates that school resource officers do not contribute to the overall wellness and safety of students. I'm here to encourage you to dive deeper and look at the core issues, as many others have mentioned. I believe that there are a number of other solutions to the problems that our students and families are facing in this moment. And I encourage you all to provide our students and families those supports that they actually need and not simply put police into our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Cadence Scotto, followed by Anne Childs.
Hello. I'm Cadence Scotto, they're them pronouns. I'm a resident of Greenfield, and I've been living and or working here since 2012, so about 10 years. There are a lot of teenagers in my life. I have teenage sisters. I have a partner who is parenting two teens. And my job is as a program coordinator to support positive youth development. And for many of these kiddos, police do not meet their immediate needs for safety and support. They need other kinds of resources and relationships, as we've been hearing. Young people need care and compassion, flexibility, collaboration, and autonomy, more than control and punishment. They need their peers and adults to help them work through the process of growing and healing, especially right now. In my professional work, I've been studying and practicing approaches like restorative justice to respond to the needs of many of the students, teachers, families. And I've been working with colleagues and community members to design a program and apply for a federal grant, which would allow us to partner with schools to increase restorative relationships. And if accepted, this grant would allow the program to place two full-time individuals in the school beginning in the fall. And, you know, those folks would have a support system and a learning environment to ensure integrity and accountability. So I mentioned this just as one way that, or like one option, and one way that partnering with a local organization would really expand the funds and the people power in schools. There are already, you know, so many assets in the community working on alternatives to control and punishment as a way of supporting young people's development. We've heard, you know, a lot of examples on this call. So I do believe that shared collective resources can have a more significant impact than just one individual in the school, and I'd be happy to be a part of the team that works collaboratively and creatively to meet student needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anne Childs, followed by Ella.
Hi, can you hear me?
Nothing clear.
Okay, great. So my name is Anne Childs, and I'm a Greenfield parent. Firstly, an SRO program alone won't be successful if we use it as a Band-Aid for problems caused by having an understaffed school where kids already don't have the supports that they need. Secondly, if we have an SRO, we should try to get one with a comfort dog partner. That would keep our SRO program community and therapeutically focused, and would be better for morale in general. Officers Clarence and Donut have been publicity boons for Greenfield, so let's bring in more dogs anywhere we can. And that's not just big dog talking. And finally, in terms of discipline, there's a large body of research indicating that teenagers' circadian rhythms, their natural sleep schedules, conflict with our early school start time, and that later start times reduce disciplinary incidents and improve grades. While we're looking at solutions, we should explore a later school start time so kids won't be battling their own biology. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ella, followed by Dawn. And then if anyone else wishes to comment, please add it to the chat, because Dawn is currently the last person on my list. Not hearing from Ella. Let's go to Dawn.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Oh, hi. Hi, my name is Dawn. I live in Greenfield. I have two small children in elementary school. I also have two older kids who, we lived in a different area when they were in school. And I just wanted to speak in favor of a school resource officer. When my older kids were in school, they had one in the district we were at. He was absolutely wonderful. He forged relationships with those kids. Everyone from elementary up to high school knew him. He was out in the community during Halloween events in the community. He was at school community events. Everyone got to know him. And it wasn't, he wasn't there to stand in the hallway and just, you know, be a scare tactic. He really, really, I saw, I saw it firsthand how great he was with the kids of all ages. And I was actually kind of surprised when I moved to Greenfield with my new little kids. And you didn't have one, and I thought it was a given to always have that relationship with police and firemen that come in and do their fire safety stuff. I mean, I don't see that kind of, I don't know, like, community partnerships, I guess, with this. But so many people seem fearful of that school resource officer idea. And what I have seen in other school districts with my older kids, and, I mean, even my younger two started off preschool and such at this district I was at. And he would come in and hang out with them. They were so little, and, I don't know, you know, he went to every school, and they all knew him, and it was wonderful. And I just wanted to put in that favorable comment about it. I do believe it can work, and I think it's important to have that. Anyways, that's my comment, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Melissa Webb, followed by Trey Henry.
I just want to say thank you for your time. This is Melissa Webb. I live in Greenfield. I really wanted to say that I am not for or against a school resource officer. I feel that we should leave the choice up to the building and what the needs are of the students and the faculty, staff, and teachers there, because they know what's best for them, and they know what they need as a whole. And I know a lot of people are calling in and saying, you know, we work there and we want this or that. But truly make sure that we're listening to everyone's voice, not just the people making public comment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Trey Henry, followed by Mary Ann Bullock.
Hi, this is Trey Henry. My daughter's a junior at Greenfield High School, and as a person of color, she would absolutely not feel safe with any sort of police officer in the building. Has expressed that very clearly. And I hope that the school understands that children feel unsafe with police officers in the building, and you can't learn if you don't feel safe. So I really hope...
You can't learn, you stupid...
Excuse me? Children can't learn if they don't feel safe. Thank you.
Susan, I wonder if you're in your role as chair, if you might want to...
Yes. I'm not certain what that was or who it was that was speaking, but if everyone would please mute their microphone if they're not the person who is speaking. And also, please refrain from making derogatory comments to anyone who is speaking throughout the evening. My apologies.
Thank you. Okay. Mary Ann Bullock.
Hi, y'all. I'm Mary Ann Bullock. I am, live in Precinct Five, Hope Street. I'm an incoming city counselor in January. I wanted to speak, I am against a school resource officer. I also have spoke against this before, years ago, when this came up, and I was working with Community Action directly as a school liaison to try to number the kid, number of percentage of children that had CRAs filed on them in our juvenile court. There is a mandate in Massachusetts for us to try to lower the number of children requiring assistance in our district, and that's what our Family Resource Center at Community Action, part of what they've been tasked to do. They're an external resource. And my history in that role was pretty devastating. I worked with families with kids who'd had interactions with the SRO for normal childlike behavior that was criminalized and disproportionately criminalized because these were kids of color. So these were kids who maybe got in a fight, were being, were too into school, and the SRO was used to remove them from school, many times in handcuffs, in five-point restraints. And I can't tell you the number of students that chose to leave our district after that. And many of them chose to leave school after that altogether. This, someone said this earlier, it's a Band-Aid, right? Like, we are not, I don't know what the budget is currently, but when I looked at the budget years ago, it was something around $65,000 or $70,000 that we were going to pay an SRO to be in our schools. Nowhere near what we're paying our social workers or our teachers to be there. If we are willing to allocate money for a police officer in the school, we really need to be first allocating money to have accurate and a full capacity of staff to deal with the current trauma that kids are dealing with because of COVID-19. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, I'm not against police. That is not what I'm trying to say here, and I think there's this, like, this black-and-white thinking that we really have had about an SRO that I've heard years ago, and I'm hearing some of tonight. We have a lot of ways that our Greenfield police officers are doing community policing. My kids, who are in Greenfield Public Schools, they do the playing cards, they do community events, they show up at family fun days. There's plenty of ways that our children are having positive, community-based experience with police officers. When we put an SRO in schools, whatever the mandate is, which is to not be punitive and not be enforcing, they end up doing that. And no, no child should be exposed to that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ella?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Ella. I live in Greenfield. I'm not directly involved with Greenfield High School or Middle School, but I have worked in after-school programs, specifically at Peck Metal School in Holyoke. And based off of my experiences there and what I'm hearing from a lot of people in this meeting is that we all feel like the students need a trusted adult to talk to about their issues. They need someone who will make them feel listened to and seen. That person can come in many different forms, and perhaps it could be filled by an SRO. But we're not talking about just some random person who happens to be an SRO. We're talking about the position as a whole. The SRO is tied to the criminal justice system and school-to-prison pipeline. They more likely are trained to be punitive, just like Mary Ann Bullock just said. The SRO position comes with a certain authority and consequence than, say, a teacher or a parent. And more often than not, because of those ties, the SRO, whether they're a kind human being or not, just their presence alone can escalate a situation because of the role that they are. Students who are already struggling with authority figures in general, I can guarantee, are not going to do a lot better with an SRO present. I think what is needed are more mental health professionals in the school who can train both students and teachers in ways to cope with overwhelming feelings and situations in healthy ways. I really urge the council to seek a robust solution instead of potentially making the situation worse by trying to put a small temporary Band-Aid on a much larger issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has logged on through their computer or smartphone who would like to make a comment by typing into the chat? Eve Bogdanov.
Hi, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Oh, good. Okay, good. Hi, Eve Bogdanov. I live in Greenfield on Chaddock Street. I'm the parent of a fifth grader at the middle school, and I'm also a trauma therapist and longtime child and family therapist. I just want to say that I'm a little astounded that we're having an emergency meeting about an SRO when we should, I think, be having an emergency meeting about severe understaffing. Personally, I would like to see what the kid's behavior looks like when we're fully and appropriately staffed before we even have a conversation about an SRO. I know other people have already made comments based on research around SROs and the school-to-prison pipeline, and I'm in full agreement with that. But I feel like we're putting the cart before the horse here. You know, I know the significant amount of destabilization in families right now because of the pandemic. I understand that schools across the country are having trouble with kids...
My apologies, Eve. Glenn, hold your time if there's, if I overstep. If someone is playing a trombone or a trumpet in the background, if you could please mute, that would be helpful, because I'm distracted.
Can you just stop?
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay. We're all living with it. It's okay.
You're forgetting, not everybody else is tuning in. I'm so sorry. Just stop for just a moment. What was I saying? I was saying the cart before the horse, the understaffing. Wait, what was that last thing that was in my brain? For me, it's a question of values. You know, as a trauma therapist, of course, I'm going to say it's always about feelings and relationships and attachment. I'm going to say it's about, you know, rewarding positive behavior and developing a culture of respect and a culture of all the things that I really believe most of us feel and value. But if we move to discipline, or punishment, or authority, or police, when we don't even have enough teachers, it's sort of like, it's like a mom who's got, like, more kids than she can manage, and she's like taking care of the kids all day long, and the electricity gets cut off because the electric bill wasn't paid, and she's finally gotten all the children to bed, and they're all fed and basically clean enough, and she's plodst out on the couch, and the husband comes home and is all mad because she's laying on the couch and the house is a mess. It's, that's how I see putting an SRO into a school that's understaffed. It's like, and then, you know, he wants to criticize her because she's laying down, not understanding that she's been busting her tuchus, trying to, you know, take care of the kids without enough support. And so I just think it would be real short-sighted of us to throw an SRO in there before the teachers and the administration and the people who are doing the heavy lifting right now every day, trying to hold these schools together. I think it would be, I think it would be extremely short-sighted, and it would be very discouraging to me as a parent and to me as a therapist. I just think it would be a really bad idea. So that's my opinion. Thank you for letting me share it with you.
My apologies for interrupting your role there, Eve.
No worries. Anybody who knows me knows I can roll easily, so...
Thank you. So in my role as chair this evening, I do have a bit of leeway to respond to some things. And I, what I do want to say is, I don't think that anyone has said something that we haven't thought about. And I've also heard quite a bit that this meeting is an emergency meeting, and the reality is, it is not an emergency meeting. It's a special meeting, which sounds like semantics, but when you're sitting in our chair, it's actually a very important piece, that something can be a special meeting versus an emergency meeting. And truth be told, this meeting is not to discuss solely an SRO. The topic is safety measures. And as a community, I know that we all look the full spectrum to see what it is that we can do to ensure each other's safety. And whatever it is that comes out of this discussion, I want to be very clear in saying that that was not the singular point for us to have a meeting this evening. The intention is, we have all heard that people are struggling, and I think that that's not a surprise. I mean, why wouldn't everyone be struggling? We're wearing masks. We don't know if we can talk to people. We don't know if we can sit next to people, you know, in being in school. There's nothing easy about any of this. And truly, this is for us as a community to come together and work together to figure out what is the best thing to do to educate our children. That is always my priority, and I know, and I hope that is always the priority of those who are on the school committee and want to be on the school committee. So thank you, everyone, for letting me share some of my thoughts with you. I appreciate the time. If, Secretary Johnson-Massad, if you have no one else who is interested in speaking, I do want to remind people that one's public comment...
Well, we haven't checked yet for people who are calling in. So that is something I have to poll for. And there's a question in the chat. Folks really do only get one three-minute chance to talk to us, so...
I do also want to remind people that the chat is used to only indicate that you are willing to speak for public comment. Commenting on other discussion is not permitted.
So when there was some noise from some of the phones, I muted some folks. I'm going to unmute everyone who called in, just to make sure if you want to speak up, you can. Anybody who has called in who would like to participate in public comment? Not hearing anybody.
Yeah, I'd like to go ahead and do so.
Oh, great. Say your name and where you're calling from.
Hi, my name is Andrew. I'm calling from Florence. And I just wanted to reiterate support for a lot of the things that people have said in terms of trying to take a different approach with school safety and the overwhelming amount of evidence and research that points to how SROs don't really solve the issues of school safety, that there are other approaches. One person pointed out the Pallante program in Holyoke, which has been, from what I understand, pretty excellent and is a really good model for doing something different. I also want to say that I think people have different experiences with the, with SROs, with police officers, with the carceral state, where people can have a positive experience, typically if they're white, where they won't have an issue with an officer. But the reality and the statistics very clearly show that even if you have a positive experience, the role of that institution is to enforce discipline, and it is to exert a certain kind of power and authority that is oppressive, and it is disruptive in a lot of ways disproportionately to people of color, people of non-white backgrounds. And so I think when people say, I've had a positive experience with an SRO, I think they can be amazing. There's no denying that that is, that that happens. But the institution itself, it should be questioned. It should be done differently, or rather, that we should take a different approach and not go backwards with the plummeting of SRO, but instead move forward with a different way of approaching safety in school. So that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else calling in who would like to comment? I'm not hearing anyone. I think that closes public comment.
Thank you, Secretary Johnson-Massad. As always, an excellent demonstration of how to wrangle a group of cats. I appreciate that. I say that tug and cheek all. With close of public comment, we move on to school committee reports. And we did have, obviously, a subcommittee meeting of the Health, Safety, and Facilities Subcommittee. Chair Poyet is a member of that committee, as is Secretary Johnson-Massad and member Karen. And rather than having me share what I was told happened after reading the minutes, Katie, remember Karen, would you please give us a synopsis of what was discussed and the reason for your meeting? and the reason for your meeting?
Hi, all. Um, I'm just going to start by saying I really appreciate all of the public comment we heard tonight as well as, um, all of the emails we've been receiving. It's really important when our community is in such levels of crisis following such a traumatic event for all of us, um, that we come together, even if we don't always agree, it's really important for all of us to hear from each other. And so I really appreciate it. Um, we met to talk about the ongoing safety measures that we are taking in Greenfield. Um, yes, that could possibly be in the end, as everybody's commented tonight, about an SRO, but that is not actually where we landed as a group. Um, what we thought was really important is that in this very quick crisis time, that we make a really good working relationship with our, uh, police department because they are being called to our schools and they are coming in. And so we need to really make sure that we have all of our safety measures tightened up because remember for a year and a half approximately, we weren't in buildings. So all of our practices for drills, all of our, um, techniques we were using have been out of practice. So it's there, that part is even just important to get a really strong practice going again. Uh, the superintendent had mentioned that she was working with some state police on those things as well as this. So, um, we talked a lot about what can we do? How can we help? How do we help these children in trauma? How do we protect our community? It's a lot about it. And, um, what we kind of came to as a vote as a group was to empower our superintendent to reach out and make those connections and maybe come up with some plans on what would best serve our students. It does not mean that if we, uh, if we pass this motion tonight as a group that I'm going to present to you in a moment, that we are empowering the superintendent to hire an SRO. That is not what we would be, not what we as a subcommittee wanted to happen. What we wanted was the conversation to start about what does the police department think they can best provide for us? Is that help in training us in really good de-escalation techniques? Is that getting those therapy dogs in the building? Is that, you know, a myriad of supports that they're providing for us when we call rapidly? But like, can we put some of those supports in place to support the things we've already started? For example, we have hired more mental health professionals for our buildings. They have started, they are working. We, um, the superintendent will have better updates on all of that because she probably has it written down in front of her. So I don't know, um, if you would like me to read you the motion that we passed and we can kind of go from there and see what happens or what you would like to do with that information. And if Glenn wants to contribute, please step in, Mr. Glenn.
Yes, Glenn, Glenn, please do. Um, but, but, and since you are the secretary, let me ask you this. The motion is going to be presented. Is it better for us to have the motion presented and then have you speak? Or would you prefer to speak prior to the motion being presented that you had discussed?
Um, I think I would like to share a little bit more, give it in the report section, report from the committee before the motion.
You got it.
Um, yeah. Um, well, it was interesting for me to be, uh, at this subcommittee meeting because I had just completed a campaign with two other candidates where we really put equity front and center before the Greenfield voters and we experienced, you know, a strong amount of support in every precinct of the town. And I think that, that listening to people's concerns about the equity issues in the schools really provided a big lens for me, um, when I was participating in this conversation.
Can you shut the fridge?
I talked about, um, how when I was growing up as a, as a gay kid, uh, I felt scared every, every day that I was in school. There are many children in our schools who, who don't feel safe all the time. They didn't feel safe before the pandemic and they didn't feel, they don't feel safe after. And, you know, there weren't people coming to a, a committee demanding that I feel safe as a student and that there are many students in our schools who, who don't, you know, have people always coming to school committee meetings, you know, caring about safety. So I was really glad to hear in both meetings, I'd say this one where a lot, lot more people talked about not wanting police in the schools and the last meeting where people did talk about wanting police in the schools, there's a lot of interest in, I, I hope all of our students feeling safe. Um, and so when, when it was, uh, we were originally discussing this motion, it was very much, uh, focused on the school resource officer. And I think through a very good discussion, we talked, uh, and Katie will read the motion to you soon, but we, we really put it in the context, um, that this committee does care about equity and does care about not just a single strategy for school safety, but wanting there to be a number of different, um, approaches. And I also felt comfortable voting for it because it very much is asking the superintendent to explore what resources this, the police department may have that are appropriate for us. It doesn't, it doesn't say we're authorizing you to enter into having a long-term school resource officer in the school. But for example, one thing I was very interested in is when is, what training is available for staff about when will you, when do you and when don't you call the police? And, um, so I think that that actually could have the impact of potentially having the police in the schools less often. Um, so that's kind of, that's my picture of, uh, of our conversation and we're, some of the contacts that led to the motion that Katie's going to share with us.
Thank you, Glenn. Um, Katie, can you please share the motion that you all did to bring this to the full committee? And then I'd like the rest of the committee to have some time to comment and the superintendent as well, if, if that is agreeable to everyone?
Uh, sounds good to me. Uh, 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 before I read the motion, I really want to agree with what Glenn was saying. Um, gosh, I'm so much worse on these phone calls than in person. But, uh, it, it's a really, it is really important to us that this is a multi-tiered level of support for our school systems and that we are not further traumatizing students and that we are really exploring all of our options. It's really important to me. Um, I was one of the people who voted to dismiss the SRO. I was started my charge here on the school committee. It was one of the first things I worked with, um, in my subcommittee back then. Um, so for me to even be thinking about this is very difficult for me personally. That's my personal statement. Um, so I, we're in a crisis situation and I want to make sure we're doing everything possible to get out of this crisis situation with everybody's safety and mental health intact. And so I really want to focus on that. Um, so here is the motion. Um, we move as a part of a multi-tiered support system sensitive to equity issues in our schools, that the school committee direct the superintendent to begin discussions with the chief of police on safety and security support options from his department for our schools and report back to the school committee.
You're unmute, uh, Member Ekstrom?
Sorry, my apologies. I, I like that motion.
Susan Farber, would you like me to copy it into the chat?
Exactly. Thank you.
And so for the sake of conversation for everyone, at the very least, with a hopeful outcome, I, would someone like to second that, that motion? So there's no second?
I believe we're still reading it, those of us who may not have heard it the first time.
Okay. Apologies.
Chair? I'm happy to second that as long as there is discussion afterwards.
That's, that is fully my intent of, of this being read and our voting or our seconding, I should say. So anyway, okay. So now that we've established that piece, committee members, can I ask you to speak up and share your thoughts? Member Johnson Mossad, go ahead. Secretary, my apologies.
No, that's fine. Um, yeah, I guess I just wanted to share another, um, thought, which is that I, this talks about a multi-tiered support system. The superintendent doesn't have to come to us as a school committee to ask for permission to enact a multi-tiered support system. That's already in place and kind of within her authority. I think she, I think it was, I think it's important for us as a body to deliberate on the relationship with the police in particular because we had actually given this prior superintendent a directive to kind of move away from the relationship of having a school resource officer in the school. So, so even though the motion is focused on, um, beginning discussions with the chief of police, it's not at all, um, in, like, that's the only strategy that's being pursued. And I think the superintendent could probably speak to us about all the other strategies and avenues that she's traveling.
Certainly. Uh, Mayor, you had your hand up?
I believe, uh, Member Hollins was ahead of me, so please allow her to speak.
I have the wrong screen on.
I under.
Member Hollins.
Um, I can support the motion, but I would like to comment on the issue. May I?
Please.
That is that, um, there are, there are issues on the surface and there are really deep rooted issues that are complicated, more complicated only than issues of the school to prison pipeline, which are also complicated. If we're really going to look at school to prison pipeline, um, and if you read, I sent the school committee an article about that, there are a lot of issues in schools that have nothing to do with the police. There are discipline policies, zero tolerance policies, suspension policies, who's dropping out of school, how we address literacy, what we do when students are suspended because that makes them get further behind in school, um, crowded classrooms, uh, outside issues. So if we're really going to be serious about wanting to do everything to prevent students getting into the judicial system, then, uh, we have to look at other features in our school besides their relationship with the police, particularly suspension, expulsion and literacy rates of students. The other thing I wanted to say is that there are, um, other factors besides trauma, not to discount that, that are complicating things. For example, we heard last time another, a number of fifth grade parents saying their children were just frightened to be in school for different reasons. But that, that particular building that we use for grade five, uh, when we have regular in session school, there's a lot of effort helping fourth graders transition over to that school because it's a big school. I remember always getting lost in that school myself for a long time, maybe always, I don't know. But there was a great effort to help transition people and set up buddies and some of that also wasn't present. So there's other factors that are influencing some of the issues. I wanted to say that. And, and, um, the other thing I want to say is when you call 911, because if you don't have, um, and someone in the schools with, let's say with a dog, not, not armed, not in clothing, whatever, somebody that's got a strict guideline that they're not involved in discipline and you monitor it, um, when you have, if you don't have that, then when you have a situation, and there are some situations that aren't just how you address the culture of your school, there are situations, somebody brings a knife, somebody brings a gun, you have the kind of assault that you really have to get someone trained to figure out how to intervene if the teachers, and some teachers have said, you know, we're not trained in some of these things. Um, when you call 911, you're getting an armed, uh, uniformed police officer. So you have to think about that also. And the last thing I want to say is I think trying to change school culture, policies, procedures, making people feel safe, talking to students, getting more involved with parents, uh, I've supported that for a while, that different members of the community of our, the school committee sort of be assigned to different schools to go once in a while to the parent groups and kind of listen in better what's going on in the school. You have to have short-term interventions to stabilize as well as longer-term interventions because changing culture isn't going to happen because you have a new program. It takes time for that to happen. So I do think you need immediate and long-term interventions. I don't particularly know what they are, whether the school committee can know day to day what they are as the superintendent would know, which is why I support the motion. But the issues are complicated and I think, uh, the school committee is serious about this. You should be looking at discipline, literacy rates and, and other things that affect student behavior like how much violent TV are students watching? There's a lot of research on that and violent games and how that influences behavior and students that can sort out when that's appropriate, when it isn't. So I applaud just further, I think it's a topic, it just needs a lot more look than only the SRO police issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Mayor Weedy Gartner.
Thank you, uh, Chair Ekstrom. I believe that I can support this because I suspect and actually know that, uh, our superintendent and our chief of police are in discussions. And I have, uh, full faith in both, uh, superintendent and in the police chief to come up with a solution. We have many police officers who are trained, uh, in, um, trauma-informed care and crisis intervention and, uh, many of the things that we've been talking about here tonight. And I think the two of them will be able to work out a plan. So, um, I just want to make it clear that, um, I know that the lines of communication are open and they will continue to be open between the, the two people that are involved in setting the, the policy for us.
Member Wall, please.
I would like to hear from the superintendent on the other steps that she's taking besides just bringing in, uh, an SRO. I think that's important before we, uh, vote on this. Thank you.
Superintendent, please do. You're unmuted.
Love remote. Um, so, you know, at the last school committee meeting, I shared quite a bit of what was already in place. Um, a reminder, we have increased our social work staff. Um, a new member joined the high school, I believe, beginning of last week. Our new social work staff person will begin at the middle school on Monday after Thanksgiving. We are, since the last school committee meeting, we are working on purchasing, um, I call them sensory materials. It's for students who are dysregulated, quite honestly, at all ages that can find a spot and a support person that can be with them where they can access some different types of equipment. Um, it's not a good word for it, but things like potentially beanbag chair, be in a spot with lower lighting, have things that they can touch that give tactile stimulation that's a little bit different, things along those lines that can help students who are feeling dysregulated out of sorts, um, emotionally overloaded and that they can access that equipment for a period of time, um, and hopefully get their neurological systems, their nervous systems back on a more even keel. That can work for a lot of students. Um, some of the challenge we have with putting that in place, um, is staffing, but we're working on staffing. We are like every other district, I think in Massachusetts. We had, um, superintendents had, uh, webinar, uh, with the commissioner today. And one of the things that he talked about, which I have already signed up for, is being part of a listserv through Mass Hire in collaboration with the Department of Education, where we can all enter the vacancies that we're challenged in filling and that information is going to be pushed out to, um, people through the Commonwealth. so that our needs for staffing are more publicized and potentially available to a greater population of people. I know that we're using all of the same resources for advertising our staff needs that every other district is using, which is a pro and a con. So it means I'm thinking of all the same resources that every other superintendent is thinking of, and the negative is all of our openings are in the same place. So we all have challenges with that. So we are, but we are taking measures. We have been fortunate in the past week and a half or so that we have had some additional applicants for some of our substitute positions. And our principals are very, they are prioritizing getting interviews done so that we can get qualified staff in place. So that's, that's one of the things, is staffing, the sensory opportunities. That's one of the things that we're going to try to build in at the middle school with the addition of the new counselor as soon as the sensory equipment comes in, building a resource area so that she can work with students who may need that type of support. So the other thing that we're doing is working on a process to get people who are interested in volunteering into our schools. We do need to make sure that we're covering all of the insurance needs that we would need to make sure, you know, take care of, to make sure that we're protecting our volunteers and doing the right thing in terms of process and procedure for the district. But we are actively working on that, because even if we have volunteers who are able to support, they're able to support one piece of the district function, then if that allows some of our other staff, some of our trained instructional assistants, or some of our teachers who have training, and they are able to go support some of our other students, that would be exceptionally helpful. So that information should be coming out available in the public shortly so that we can bring volunteers in. So we also, I am in conversation with two different people, organizations, around which one would be the best match to support our district in getting professional development around trauma-informed care. I have shared a resource with one of the staff who was primarily seeking that out to me. We had had a meeting, and she asked. So I shared that resource, and I'm waiting for feedback from the staff, specifically at the middle school, about whether they'd like that as a quick reference. It's not instead of ongoing professional development, but it's a quick reference that's very well-known, helping traumatized children learn. So that professional development should be moving along. So those are all pieces that have happened since the last school committee meeting. And I don't want to minimize what Dr. Hollins said either in terms of, this is an exceptionally complicated issue across the board, which is why we are continuing to do the curriculum work that we're doing, because we realize how important it is to build a strong instructional program to keep all of our students moving forward, being successful, staying engaged. That's why we are doing the social-emotional learning curriculum writing, so that we provide our students with good, research-based instruction about how their behavior affects others and the world around them, and work with them on being empathetic to their classmates and others in the world, and things to think about when they're making decisions. So it's important to begin that foundation and give students a safe place to talk about how they're feeling and think about how to make decisions and how their own feelings affect how they behave and ways to deal with those feelings. And that begins all the way down at our preschool level and goes all the way up through high school. But that's work that is starting. It's unfortunate that the places that the school committee shared with me when I was interviewing, that we did not have process and procedure and system-wide structures in place. Those are some of the pieces that I think Dr. Hollins was referencing that I completely agree with. We need to build strong structures across the board on both sides of the mass-tiered system of support triangle, the academic piece, as well as the social-emotional and behavioral piece. So, you know, there are a lot of resources that we're working on, but we also have to make sure that we're doing them thoughtfully and not just, you know, forgive the analogy, but not just throwing spaghetti against the wall. We need to be thoughtful about how we bring different curriculum resources together to make sure that they're complementing and helping support the same ideas and not doing one thing at, for example, Four Corners and a completely different thing at Newton Street School. And then when they get to the middle school, they don't have consistent understanding about expectations. That's just one example of the type of thing we want to make sure that we're not creating. So we need to do it. There's a lot that Greenfield has to do. But there's a lot that we are doing. And the staff, despite the fact that they are without question working in a very stressful time right now, and we do have some positions that need to be filled, without question. Our staff is doing exceptional work and working very hard to meet the needs of our students. So I want to make sure that the committee and the community know that they're, they are giving their all despite their own stresses and anxieties. So.
And I do, I, of course, anecdotally want to make comments, because that's what I do, which I do mostly so that the community understands that, you know, I'm standing in the same place you are, seeing the same things you are. And, you know, I once spent time as a crisis counselor, which makes me a little bit more in tune to when something is in crisis and, and how to respond to those things. I used to go to, go out on calls with police officers to highly emotional situations to help them, them work through whatever is going on, be it with the person in crisis, or to help the officer, or whatever the case may have been. And there's always people who are better at it than others. And, and I recently had been made aware of a story, and, and actually, I'll share a personal one. My, one of my kids was being a nudge in class, and rather than the teacher, who I know is a very skilled teacher and has a lot, has a lot of experience and has worked with my other children, rather than saying to him, "Knock it off," essentially, she sent him away to the restoration room, or whatever it's called at the high school, to write a paragraph on why it was that he should not do that behavior. Which tells me that that teacher, who is experienced and we know is a good and qualified teacher, is so stressed out that she, in that moment, was unable to access what she knows works and what she's already done in the past, because she is so, and I'm not, I'm not identifying this, this teacher as a singular person, but because she, she is so stressed, and our teachers are so stressed, that it's hard to, to get past little things that are going on in class, because all of these sort of global weights on our shoulders. And I think that that is part of the reason that an officer is being called, or, and I think there's little compounding things that are building and building and building until you have an explosion. And that isn't something that we want to see. And I don't know what the answer is. I think that, I think, I've heard wonderful thoughts from all kinds of people, being, yes, let's have someone, no, we shouldn't have someone, it doesn't make sense. I think that probably all of them are right. I also don't know what the best thing for us to do is right now as a community. And I think closing the door to something that could be a piece of the puzzle, or a piece in solving the puzzle, would not be beneficial. I, that's my thoughts. Member Wall.
I just want to comment on the fact that I know that the superintendent is working very hard on many different facets to correct the situation in the schools, and that she is not going to bring in someone who is going to bully anybody in the schools. I am certain that she will be well-aware of, of what's going on. And so if this is a piece that is going to be helpful, I, I support it 100%.
Thank you, Jean. Superintendent, what would you foresee if you were to have? I, I know that you've had a couple conversations with the chief already, and I know that you've taken on sort of this style of thing in the past in your career and have, have lots of experience with this. And granted, or not granted, but I certainly have all the confidence in the world in you to take care of this and, and to figure this out. And I'm just curious, what is it, what do you foresee conversations would look like? Or what, what would you expect the outcome to be?
I'm not going to anticipate ahead of time what, what the conversations can be. I know that I felt extremely comfortable after the conversation with the chief that we had shared goals of supporting all of the students. I will say that he and I both had the same understanding of all of the factors that are impacting our students and our staff and, you know, all the members of the community as a whole. So that was a wonderful place to start. One of the things that we talked about was the chief visiting schools with me and also meeting with our administrators so that we can, I will call it, debrief about some of the situations that have led to the police coming to the schools. And, you know, they, they have. They've come to the schools since I have been in Greenfield. I have interacted with a number of the officers for non-emergency issues. And, you know, they, they have responded to the schools when they were asked to do so. So I think I want to debrief the situations and allow both he and I to hear from people that were involved about their thinking. We can hear from the police department's perspective and vice versa. And then I think, once we have that shared, comprehensive understanding of, of the situations, then we'll be able to start some additional conversations, pull in some stakeholders, get feedback, and talk about the continuum of resources that we may be able to have in place. And then, you know, the pragmatic end of that, what are the financial implications? What are the policy implementations? What would anything look like in practice? So, you know, I think the first step is that I feel that he and I share philosophy about working together, and that is the best first spot to be in.
Okay.
Comment?
Member Hollins, was that you? Yes, please, go ahead.
I'd like to comment on the wording of the motion, if I may. The wording of the motion, again, I, I don't object to the motion, but the wording first says, it directs the superintendent to begin discussions. And I'd like to say, I would bet if you ask most superintendents, they have ongoing discussions with the police, fire, all sorts of agencies, all the time. They have to, because they have relationships with all those. So I doubt if it's beginning, a beginning, but it is looking at things differently. But my comment is that the discussion, and maybe this relates to some of the concerns of people calling, speaking to the issue, is only with the police. When in fact, some of the issues of our students may relate to food insecurity, not having heat, parents losing jobs, being homeless, increased, you know, we have children that live with violence on their phones, or death of parents, there's all kinds of things. And superintendents have to be constantly talking to not only police, but, but also like social service agencies and like grief counselors. There's all sorts of people. So my thought about the motion is, maybe to broaden it, if, if people thought that was useful, to have discussions with the chief of police, but also other relevant state and local resources. Because if we're looking for understanding and safety and support options, maybe we should be looking not only with the police, but more broadly with other agencies that have services that relate to family and children. Thank you.
I wonder if that would be a second motion, only because one doesn't negate the other?
Yeah, it may not even be a motion. It's just, this is very limited, and maybe the outreach for looking for options and, and understanding the different requirements of different agencies may be beneficial.
I feel like we've been pretty clear that that's what we would like the superintendent to do in general, unless I'm mistaken. Superintendent, have you ever thought otherwise for us?
No, I think the challenge in terms of the, or the, the discussion around a motion from the committee related to working with the police department is because my understanding is that the school committee had terminated the SRO program. You folks certainly individually or as a whole have never given any appearance that you do not want me interacting with social service agencies and, you know, the Department of Public Health or any of the other agencies available in the city. And I have been meeting with them and having conversations and exchanging emails. So I feel like that piece is happening. I think the explicit direction to me would be more needed if you would like me to explore something that previously may have been
Put away.
Though, I think, not to disagree with Dr. Hollins in her, her point about the need to encompass all of those agencies, but I certainly feel that that is something that is implicit in my work and is happening, so.
Yeah, I don't, you know, having conversations with the police isn't the whole ballgame. It's one part of it, so.
Without question. There's a lot of, a lot of players that need to be involved in this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay. Are we ready for a vote? Okay. Secretary Johnson, Katie, you got something, hon?
I don't know. I just want to make it clear that, because we had, I think the superintendent was saying that she needed this because we had terminated our contract for the SRO in the past. And so what will need to happen, in my opinion, and so I want to make sure I'm correct, and I'm pretty sure I am, is that if one of the, all of the options that are discussed will come back to us for another conversation. So just because we all vote this in tonight does not mean we are getting an SRO. It does not mean we are not getting one, but it doesn't mean we are.
Absolutely.
So I want, I want especially, we heard from some educators, but I would love to be flooded with some emails from educators. I guess, more of them. I know everybody loves to read email, but I really want to hear more. And this gives us more time to hear more. So please continue to reach out to us. Please continue to stop me in the grocery store or wherever you can get what you need to tell me to me. That's all.
Yeah, just to follow up with what Katie had said, that this is just a first step. It's, this is just to have a discussion. Yes, the superintendent can make a determination by herself to implement an SRO. However, the budget committee has to add that back into the budget. The policies need to be set up around what that would look like. This isn't a, a quick and easy decision. This is thoughtful and looking at things from all angles, and what is the best way and the safest way to provide the best education possible for our children. And when I say that, I include for all the employees. If they're not happy, then nobody else is going to be happy, so. Okay? If everyone's feeling comfortable, Secretary Johnson Musad, if you would do, please roll call.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Musad, I mean, yes. Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weedy Gardner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Sec-, thank you, Secretary Johnson Musad. And as I said earlier, I'm working with two computers this evening instead of two screens, and one goes to sleep. So let's move on to our next school committee report, policy and program.
Excellent. We met earlier today. And on this first item, we we realize we have already, we did already visit this policy recently, and the superintendent's going to update us on whether there are any more steps we need to take on the school discipline.
If it does appear that that policy was voted, I, looking back at the motion from August, I think that one will go back to the policy subcommittee. It was done on an expedited vote with the request to revisit, so we can put it back on for the next, you know, one of the next policy subcommittee meetings, but it was voted. So we are good at this point with JIC.
Excellent.
Is that the medication policy?
No, that's student conduct.
And so what is it that you're looking for from us this evening?
In student conduct, nothing. We had, we are ironing out procedures between all parties, and that highlighted that we're gonna iron out a procedure. So it is voted. It was not updated on the policy manual. So.
Nothing better than someone saying, you just need to know this. You don't need to do anything about it. I enjoy that. I don't know about anyone else. All right. With that, do we move on to policy JLCD administering medicines to students?
Yes, and I can give a summary and then, Superintendent, if you want to fill in the gaps, but we had voted on an expedited basis of policy because we just needed to have something. And the there was a concern raised at that, meaning that the what was put before us was maybe a little bit more into the administrative details than we needed to be, but we needed to have something. So we passed that on an expedited basis. Since then, we've had a chance to go back to the, look at, look at a policy that's kind of broader. And then I forget the name of it, but the specific protocols will kind of reside in a different place and not in our policy manual. But Superintendent, do you want to fill that in a more?
You got it. The what was voted, as was referenced, what was voted prior had been something that was brought forward before I was in the district. And our nurse leader, Kelly Savitri, highlighted the fact that the district was missing some important policy that would allow nursing to move forward with some of the things they needed to have in place. So you folks did graciously vote for that to have something on the books. But Dr. Hollins had asked about getting something that may be more in a traditional form of a policy rather than administrative regulations. And so this is the policy that MASC had in draft for our consideration. So if you vote to approve, it would then relegate the prior, if we could vote to change the prior voted information to administrative regulation and have this as the school committee's policy.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Isn't anything that's related to nursing or medications, basically the state tells us what we have to do?
They tell us the administrative regulation in terms of the process, but this is you allowing the practice to occur in a general sense. How it then gets done is dictated by nursing regulations.
Right. Okay. Okay. And so we are looking to, are we looking to waive a first reading on this or looking to send it to policy? What is it? What would you like us to do with this?
I can make a motion and and we can second it and discuss. How does that sound?
Sounds good.
So I move that we waive the second reading and replace our current policy JLCD administering medicines to students with the policy as presented in our packets.
I will second that. Although is someone else supposed to do it since I'm chair this evening? I don't know if it matters.
You can second.
All right. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Member Hollins had her hand up.
Member Hollins, please.
Could I make a friendly amendment that the motion be just to replace? And the reason is that waiving a reading isn't really one of our policies. We can vote on a first reading and then bring it back to affirm. But the new practice of waiving things, it's really not how any school district works. There's always a two-step practice so that there's time to think. So I would like to amend, suggest amending the motion just to replace.
There's a really explicit discussion in our policy about allowing for policies to be approved on an expedited basis and then be brought back. So.
That's correct, but it's not waiving. It's voting on the first reading.
So voting on it and implementing it on an expedited basis, which is essentially has the same effect. I think we're we're talking about words here, but.
No, I don't think so, because when you vote on the first by a policy, it comes back. That second step is still there. You just voted on the first step. Anyway, that's our policy. It hasn't changed.
Let me ask a question unrelated to that. When I'm looking at this, it's listing students who fall into the following exceptions may self-administer medications. If more students fall into that category, does that mean we have to vote on this again to say, yes, we still want to do this?
My understanding, I'm certainly happy to have, you know, if.
I want to, I would, as always, I would like us to not have to revisit the policy, not because, like, you know, because it's a living document, not because we have, we didn't, you know, put a comma somewhere.
My understanding, although not being a nurse, I'm certainly happy to clarify with Ms. Savitri, but my understanding is there are limited limited medications that can be administered by students. And, you know, if.
So if more come back, then we'll just vote again, and that'll be that. It's fine. I just wanted to, wanted to ask the question.
I believe it's a fairly finite group of of situations that would fall under that.
Okay.
I had a chance to look up our policy, and I just want to say that Member Hollins is correct that it says, "In an emergency situation, the committee may adopt or amend on the first reading. In such circumstances, the policy amendment should return a second time for affirmation of the emergency policy decision." So I will amend my motion to adopt this policy on the first reading.
Thank you.
Mayor, do you accept that friendly amendment or friendly revision?
I do, but I want to make sure I understand fully before I say I do.
Okay.
That's always a good policy. This is replacing the one that we had already put in place.
That's correct.
And it is because we left something out in the be, in the other one. I'm missing a chapter here.
Well, we, we needed to have this policy in place for the nurses to be able to do their work.
I remember.
And so what we did was we adopted something with very specific guidance, because that was what we had in front of us, that we needed to get it done. And what we've done is we're saying this policy that we're replacing that with is a broader, kind of more, more in line with what our policies are. But we maintain those other instructions as as the kind of administrative guidance for how it's implemented. So this would replace the policy, but that administrative guidance would stay in place.
Okay, then I do accept.
Are you saying something, Member Extrem?
I said, any more discussion? Followed up with a question of if we do a roll call, it means that we will not be revisiting this for review. It would be put into place, correct?
It will be immediately adopted on the first reading, but we will bring it back for a second reading.
Okay.
And that's just to affirm the decision of.
Yes, indeed, we did believe it. Okay.
Yeah.
Any more discussion? Let's do a roll call.
Hey, Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Mossad, I mean, yes. Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. And I gotta go back to my other screen. Give me a minute.
It's the second reading and vote on policy BEDH, public comment.
Thank you, Glenn. Go ahead.
So we passed this at our October meeting, and we did not have comments, was not sent back to policy with suggestions for improvement or changes. One note is that the, we've had a little bit of version control. What was emailed out to the school committee members recently is not the version that you looked at in October. So I'm going to share my screen so you can't see the version that we did already vote on unanimously in October. Let me see how I do that. Share. Soft word. And I think you're looking at our agenda now, but I want to get us to our public comment. Do you see my screen with the public comment? Okay.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
The primary difference between the version that you looked at and the version that we looked at was that was in this, is this blue wording, I believe. The presiding chair may permit extension of the time limit by an additional 15 minutes in extenuating circumstances. I think it just gives a guideline for the chair about how much longer a public comment can be extended. So other than that, I think it's the same as what you have, but I'll leave it up on the screen. Maybe I can reduce the fonts a little bit so you can see it all in one. I don't know how.
No, actually, could you make it a little bit larger?
Sure. Yeah, okay. And let me, let me.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'll let you read, and I can scroll down as as people ask. I don't know.
I actually just want to see the, what the addition was. I do remember the previous. Thank you.
So does anyone else want to see more of this policy that you have already seen, but just? Okay, then I'll stop sharing my screen.
Is there any discussion this evening?
Oh, maybe I make a motion to, that we approve this for the, on the second reading.
Sounds good. All, someone else should.
I move that we approve and adopt the public comment policy as presented before our October meeting.
And is there a second?
Second.
Member Wall with a second. Any discussion or further discussion? Seeing no one raising their hand unless you're not on my screen and I don't see you. Secretary Johnson Mossad, please do a roll call.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Mossad, I'm an enthusiastic yes. Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Excellent. It passes, and we can start implementing our new public comment policy at the December meeting or any future meetings.
So number five is vote to assign school committee members to GEA in transportation collective bargaining negotiations. That is something that is typically the chair's purview and leads that discussion because they've had some thought about it. As I said, Chair Prorietti is not available this evening. And so if it's okay with everyone, I'd like to set this down for now. My sort of expectation is that it would be people who are on the negotiations and contract, whatever, whatever group that would be primarily involved. But I can't read Amy's mind, and so I don't know. She may have had some other thoughts. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Unless the superintendent has more context.
Yeah.
No, it's okay. We need to begin renegotiating successor collective bargaining agreement with Unit A and Unit C, and then the transportation union has, we have need to bargain again with the transportation union. So no, tabling it until the December meeting is fine.
Okay. And I know that that there will be a lot more discussions around those topics to begin with, so.
So maybe I'll move to formally table this item to our December meeting.
And can I get a second for that?
Second.
Member Wall, thank you. And at this point, if there was a need to go into executive session, executive session, we have that opportunity. However, we don't need to do that. Sounds like we've made our decision.
We might need to vote on the motion.
We need to vote on the motion. To table.
Oh, sorry. I was all excited and go moving ahead. I'm hungry. All right, go ahead. Secretary Johnson Mossad, if you would, please do a roll call.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Mossad, I mean, yes. Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. In my less adult way, I'm going to say, we don't need to do an executive session, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Glenn Johnson Mossad?
Wonderful. And we have to do a roll call because we're not in person, everyone. Oh, wait. Mayor wants us to go on longer.
I just was curious as to why you don't need to go into executive session.
The topic was to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. And we, seems to me, we had a very clear discussion and open discussion about that. And I don't see there's a need for us to go into executive session. The chair, in her wisdom, put that on there in the event that there was something that may have been more pressing. And as it turns out, there was not. Unless you really want to go to executive session, we can just hang out. No?
No.
Okay. Secretary Johnson Mossad, if you would, please.
This is the motion to adjourn. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Extrem?
Clearly, yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson Mossad, I mean, yes. Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weidergartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone. I knew this, this is could have been a difficult evening, and I'm glad that we're all on the same page as we usually are, truthfully.